Welcome back everyone, I'm Tom Murphy and this is Trinidad Now on TTTV. With me today is Joe Bonato for our final segment. Joe, again, thank you for joining me. We're rushing a little bit because we both have schedules to meet, so we're going to combine probably the third and fourth segment.
It's fine.
So if you see this with somebody else, as you know, we both are on a time constraint. So, this is about management, city and city manager type of stuff. So, as a city council member, whether you're the mayor or council member, what is your role in government?
Probably my most important role of sitting as a city councilman or as a mayor is to see that our city is properly run, spending money, how we spend money and stuff like that is probably the most important. To show city taxpayers that their money is not just going out the window and we have to show that, or, you know, what we build or what we're going to use their money for. So, I think that's the most important on that, Tom.
Okay. Joe, what relationship should council have with city employees?
Well, as you know, according to the charter, the city councilman or a mayor should not be involved with personnel matters. You know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I know everybody probably on city employees, I talk to them once in a while, "Mr. Bonato, how you doing, how you doing?", but that's probably the deal that, anything else that comes up, it should be dealt with the city manager and the city employee. So, it's kind of, like I say, touchy there too, so.
So, as an example, if an employee came to you with a complaint about their supervisor, how would you respond?
My response would be, you'd have to go see the city manager. That's the person in charge of what's going on. I don't have, I can't interfere with saying, "Well, you know, what happened and done all this", I can't do that as far as a councilman. I don't have the right to do that.
Well, Joe, you're running for mayor, which to me in Trinidad is one of the more esteemed positions that we have.
That's right.
And council, you're one of seven, as mayor, you're the only one. We have county commissioners, there's three. And so, it's probably one of the most prestigious, I think, offices.
It is.
So, how would you, in that position, define leadership?
Yeah, leadership to me is that you bring out everything into the open. I mean, like I say, I get very frustrated with, sometimes with the city council because we look at one thing in particular and we have a tendency of putting everything on the back burner that seems important. That's what leadership is. We have to show people that, you know, if you're worried about the infrastructure, you bring it up, about backflow valves, you bring it up, about public safety, all this kind of stuff, that's what leadership is. Is a guy that's going to step up to the front and say, "This is it. We could talk about this subject till we're blue in the face, but we have these other problems that we have to address and address now." That's what leadership is.
Okay. In our charter, it explains that our city management is a council-manager form of government. Now, there are places like Denver where the mayor, and I think even Colorado Springs...
Strong mayors, yeah.
Well, they are essentially the city managers. But our, for the people that don't know, our system is a council-manager type of government. Explain that to the people that maybe don't go to city council very often, how that works.
Well, our city charter, we're run by our city charter. And that charter was printed, I believe, back in 1993. And, that's what we're addressed to. Everything that, that's like our bible, the council-city bible. It's what we have to do and what we have to obey as far as running through a charter system. Other municipalities are different. They got what they call a strong mayor, like Mr. Suther is in Colorado Springs and stuff like that. They don't have a charter that they go by. It's just what they call a strong mayor, and then they have the council that's divided from the mayor. So, that's what our charter is. And it's really important that we stick to the charter. There's a lot of people that run on council that don't know the charter. I think I'm one of them that really know the charter. The other city councilman that told me that was Mr. Sandoval when I ran for it. He said, "Joey, whatever you do, make sure you read that charter and know it back and forth." And I think that's a little bit of our problem that we have today. I don't think there's some of us on the council that really know that charter like I do. So, that's what we have to stick by, Tom.
This is more of a follow-up question. Would you ever be in support of changing the charter so that it was a strong mayor?
You know, ever since I've been a councilman, I just followed with what that city charter was. I'd have to look into more issues to see if I would change, go into a municipality like that. I don't really know right this time.
Okay. So, what is exactly executive session?
An executive session is called, either the mayor could call it by himself, or it takes two councilmen, members to go into executive session or to put it on the agenda. And the executive session is the purpose of what the council can discuss. I believe the only one that should be in the executive session is the city manager and the city attorney, and maybe the city clerk, and the rest be councilmembers and the mayor. The executive session is for a purpose to learn what has transpired, what's going in, before we actually address the public of what we're going to talk about. So, that's what the executive sessions are.
Okay. So, what are the, what all can be discussed in an executive session?
You could discuss different things, maybe like ARPA and the grants or something like that. But there's no decisions, no decision can be made within executive sessions. You can't take a vote in the executive session or whatever and then come out and say, "Blah, blah, blah", and then we took this vote. But, that's what usually happens in there.
Okay. Joe, what if an illegal or improper decision or discussion would take place in an executive session, what would you do?
Well, I've done it quite a few times. I kind of threw a fit on a few things. There's things that, I believe, and this is my opinion, that went on in executive session and that should have never happened. And I ain't going to mention those, but I firmly believe that. And even when you go into executive session, the mayor has the duty to state, you've got to, you know, no discussion out of the box. If it gets going out of the box, it's, you know, it's terminated, stopped. But, there was a few times, yeah, I will, I will admit, I didn't like what was going on in executive session.
Did you bring it out in a regular session meeting?
I brought it up into the executive session and I told them, you know, "This isn't right, we're not going to do it." And, kind of things settled down a little bit.
Okay. Joe, here's, we're going to combine the last segment because we're both running out of time. I'm going to read through the other ballot, the referendums that are going to be on the ballot, that pertain to city. And then I ask you one follow-up question, how do you feel about the television? You already answered that. That was going to be my follow-up question. And then I'm going to let you speak to the camera over here and say whatever you want to say, and we're going to wrap it up. So, let me read through this for everybody. Referendum 2. Shall Section 8.3, Paragraph 3 of Charter, of Chapter 8, Boards and Commissions of the City of Trinidad, Colorado Home Rule Charter be amended to allow one-year residents of Los Anamos County who are registered to vote to also serve on city boards and commissions, excluding the Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission, provided that the majority of the board or commission always be comprised of city residents? All is set forth in the Trinidad City Ordinance, Number 2037, Section 1. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Referendum 3. Shall Section 8.5 of the Chapter 8, Boards and Commissions of the City of Trinidad, Colorado Home Rule Charter be amended to clarify that city council serves as the Planning, Zoning and Variance Board of Appeals to hear and decide appeals of decisions rendered by the Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission, as all set forth in Trinidad City Ordinance, Number 2038, Section 1? Yes or no?
Absolutely.
Okay. Referendum 4. Section 8.6, Paragraph 1 of Chapter 8, Boards and Commissions of the Home Rule Charter for the City of Trinidad, Colorado be amended to require the frequency for development and submission of a master plan by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board be once every five years? All set forth in Trinidad City Ordinance, Number 2039, Section 1? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. And the last one. Shall Section 12.6 of the Charter, seven general provisions of the City of Trinidad, Colorado Home Rule Charter be amended to clarify that all permanent/full-time employees except administrative employees have the right to bargain collectively within the city? All is set forth in the Trinidad City Ordinance, Number 2040, Section 1? Yes or no?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, Joe.
That was easy there.
Yeah. Well, it's, I want people to know where people stand on this. We've seen, I think, in my opinion, some things killed off just because people, they just rather vote no than take the effort to say yes.
Right. To read them, that's what's wrong.
Last part. I'd already asked you about how you felt about the television, I appreciate that. To me, it's something that I've done on my own dime and my own time because I think the more transparent and more informed the community is, the better off we are. Last part here is, you're going to look at this camera here, and whether you take 30 seconds or 30 minutes, and I hope it's not 30 minutes.
No.
But you can tell the voters, and I want you to look at that one there. I want you to tell the voters, whatever it is that you want to tell them, and whether you ask for the vote or whatever it is, not "Talk to me" but to that camera right there. So, you have as long as you need, say whatever you want.
I just, I'd like to thank Mr. Murphy for having me today, and it was an enjoyable morning. I think people know who I am and what I stand for. I love this little town and I always will love this little town. As far as me running for mayor, all I ask is that this be a clean election. I don't believe there would be no mudslinging between myself and Mr. Rico. I have known Mr. Rico for a number of years, and whatever happens, happens. May the best man win the mayor. I just want to say to our people out there that I truly, truly want to be your next mayor. I have looked for a number of years to do this opportunity, and I think the time now is to change. And this is a very important election that we, the people, have to get out and vote. There's so much that's going on in our little town and there's going to be a lot more going I do, I want to commend my council members. I know there's been some bickering back and forth with myself and the other council members, but I want to commend them for doing the job. It takes a lot to sit on council and make tough decisions. I think I'm the one that makes the tough decisions all the time, but my decisions are always ruled to what I think is best for the people of this town and this city. I'm not going to sit here and tell you, "This is what Joe Bonato is going to do" or "What I want." I want the city, the people of the city of Trinidad to come to me and say, "Joe, we need this", or "Joe, can we do this?" So, I hope we have a good turnout at the October 5th Meet the Candidates Night. I'm willing to listen to you. And again, we're on a timeframe here, so I'm going to say again, thanks to Mr. Murphy for putting this on. And whoever wins, God bless you, and we'll have a good time together on this. Thank you very much.
Joe, and thank you. What excites me, as I think I mentioned at city councils, to see so many people running.
Absolutely.
There is, I think, sometimes apathy when it comes to our government as far as voting, and there are people that don't have the right to vote, and people here sometimes don't seem to care.
That's right.
And you have one of the best opportunities ever. But, thank you very much for being on. You and I have had our differences, but this is what should happen. We should be able to sit down and talk. And so, I really appreciate you coming on and coming here, so thank you.
I do too, Tom, and like I say, there was differences, but that hatchet's buried. And, like I say, if we could just carry on now and move Trinidad forward, that's the best thing we could do.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tom Murphy, this is Trinidad Now. Thank you for watching. Again, you can see this on our local cable channel, which is Cable Channel 71, and you can also find us on YouTube, Trinidad Times TV 71. And actually, if you're watching this on YouTube, then you already know, you found it. So, thank you very much. That's a wrap.
Thank you, Tom.
Joe, welcome back everyone, I'm Tom Murphy and this is Trinidad Now on TTTV. In my final segment with current Mayor Phil Rico, who is running for another term. This is the last segment. This is going to be on management, and then we're going to talk about the referendums real quick, where you stand on those. And then the last part is you're going to turn the camera and you have as long as you need to say whatever you want to the voters.
Okay.
So, Phil, when it comes to management, as a city council member, what is your role in government?
Well, I'm the mayor, and as...
Whoops.
My role is to control the meetings. I talk to Audra as to maybe what needs to be on the agendas, to be able to control that agenda, to try to keep all the councilmen, council, on, you know, on one track, to keep them from deviating, from, keep them from fighting. So, that's my job, but also, my job is to be out in the community, for people to recognize that I am thoroughly and deeply interested in what this, in my job as mayor. So, I look at my marriage, I take it very seriously. I spend around 20 to 25 hours a week, whether it's preparing, going to meetings, going to Denver, going to Springs, wherever I need to go, waking up in the middle of the night thinking of something, getting my pencil out and writing it down because I think of something. So, you spend a lot of time doing things like that. So, as mayor, you have to interact with your city manager. I interact with, you know, the city clerk. Beyond that, I have very little contact with any of the other... And you were going to ask that question, I believe, in this segment as well, and we'll talk about that. But, you're, as council people, we're very limited what we should be doing, or what we can be doing.
As far as interfering with the city manager?
Well, interfering with not only the city manager, but with employees.
Right. Yeah, we are going to ask that here in a little bit. There are three things that you do, and that is, as the mayor, that's different from council members, otherwise you're all equal. It is, you set the agenda.
Right.
You run the meetings, and you sign the legal documents.
Right.
Other than that, you're all equal.
We're all equal in every regard. We all have one vote.
Right.
Yeah.
And as, add a little bit of humor to this, I've been filming for a long time and it's been, you've had to be a referee at times. Has that been challenging for you?
Oh, yes, it has been challenging at times, and that's one of the things, I guess, that's bothered me the most, as far as running some of my meetings, because sometimes I have to be so alert with the possibilities, that sometimes it takes me away from the agenda a little bit. And, so it kind of gets me a little bit sidelined once in a while because of some of the issues. One of the other things that I think that a lot of people don't recognize, don't realize, but your mayor is your face of your community. And, you need to be able to be open to people, you need to be able to be open to criticism. You need to be able to take that criticism, whether it's justified or not, and listen. So, that is the job that I feel like I need to be doing.
Right. Okay. Okay. So, what relationship, and you started to address this, should council have with city employees that are beneath the city manager? For example, if an employee came to you to complain about their supervisor, how would you respond?
How you respond there is you do this. You need to go back to your supervisor. If you cannot resolve it at that point, you go to your city, to the city manager. Or you go to your union representative if it's a union issue. Beyond that, it's not my responsibility to tell that employee, "Well, I'm going to help you resolve this." That's not my job. Actually, we are not supposed to do that. It's by law, that is one of the things that you are not supposed to do. You're not supposed to get involved with issues like that with the employees. That's just the way it is.
I think, back in the day, when things were a bit faster and looser, I think that's what happened.
Yes, it did.
And that's why those laws are in place, to address people, to keep that from happening.
Right.
So, it's a good thing.
Yeah. When people, you know, they, I'm trying to think if, I've really not had any employee come to me and ask me to do anything.
Okay.
Which is good to see.
And you may have just answered this question in what you just said here a minute ago, but how do you define leadership?
Leadership is listening. Leadership is being able to, like I said, listen, listen intently, being able to set an agenda, follow that agenda, let people voice their opinions, try to make sense of what that person is saying, right or wrong. Not every opinion is right, not every opinion is wrong. Somewhere in there, there could be differences of opinion. It's okay to be, to agree to disagree. It's not good to just totally be bombastic and just go after people. I feel that a lot of times, people, if two people disagree on an issue, if they talk about it, something greater will come out of that disagreement. That's leadership. Being able to listen to that and kind of try to align that, try to narrow that down to something that will work for everybody. Leadership is being able to be open to, in my position, to the public at all times, be available when people say, "I want to meet with you", and treat them all equally.
Excellent. Okay. In the front of the charter, it says, "The City of Trinidad has a council-manager form of government." For those that don't attend council meetings or, you know, particularly care, but they're going to vote, what does that mean exactly?
You're talking about those that don't vote and don't really go to the meetings?
Right. So, if you're talking to someone that's watching this, what does it mean by the charter that says, "We have a council-manager form of government"?
Well, that means that what it is, is it's, you have a chain of command. Okay? And we have a chain of command in City Hall or in our municipality. We're home rule, so you have the mayor, okay, which oversees the city manager. Council oversees the manager as well. The only other person that we actually hire is our attorney, and that's pretty much it. After that, you know, it just goes down from there to the employees, people in City Hall, and you have your directors, and then you have your employees on the ground. So, that's...
You know, Denver and I think Colorado Springs, and Pablo was trying to do it, they were trying to change it so that essentially the mayor is the city manager, which is a strong mayor.
A strong mayor.
Form of government.
Right.
Would you ever think that that would be necessary here?
I don't believe so. I think we're too small of a community where we would need a strong mayor. I know that the City of Pablo is considering it right now, and I know that, of course, Colorado Springs has done it already.
Right.
And, from what I hear, they struggle somewhat with it, but, you know, it may be, you need to have that right person that has that experience. Because, to be a city, a manager and a mayor, there's actually some differences. Because you want your mayor to be out in the public. I see a lot of times where you have city managers that, because they are, they have to spend so much time on detail, on a day-to-day basis, and just revving, running the municipality, they don't have the time to be out in the public and, you know, going to the businesses, talking to people on the street, just going to all the events that are, you know, in your local area, and allowing people to say, to have an opinion, to ask you questions, to say you're visible. So, there are actually some differences, so, in the community our size, and I even think in some larger communities, a mayor's a good thing, and having a city manager is also a good thing as well. Because they do have, I think, two different jobs.
What is executive session?
An executive session is very controlled. You have to be very careful. There are only certain reasons why you can go into executive session. And when you get into the executive session, there's a procedure you have to follow. Who's in there? When you're executive session, everybody has to say, "I'm Phil Rico, I'm, you know, I'm Mr. Mate, I'm Mr. Bonato." These are all people that have to say that you're participating. When you aren't in there, you cannot make decisions. The whole idea behind an executive session is strictly for discussion. My job as mayor, if I see something get out of line, I have to call them on and say, "You're going outside the area of this executive session, please, please bring it back to the discussion we're having at hand. We know decisions are to be made here." And that's an executive session. You have to follow procedures when you're coming out of executive session.
Without asking it to divulge anything, can, is it fair to say that there's been some heated executive sessions?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, there has been. And there again, like you said earlier, I've had to be referee a time or two.
You seem like a really mellow guy, so I can, you know, you're the right person...
Yes.
...to be, you know?
Yeah. And it does. That's why I say you have to have a very controlled personality, to be able to control the... If, you know, whether it's an open meeting or whether it's an executive session, if I start raising my voice, that next person that's, they're going to raise their voice, even that much higher. So, once you start doing that, it gets totally out of control. So, you have to remain controlled by controlling yourself.
Okay. Last question on this. What if an illegal or improper decision or discussion would take place in an executive session, what would you do?
First of all, you call them on it. Then the next thing you do is, when you come out of executive session, one of the things that I have to read, if anything outside of, was discussed, outside of the parameters of the discussion that was supposed to be, I need to say, "This was a problem in the executive session." I need to be able to state it.
Okay. Moving to this next part, and when I interviewed Mr. Bonato this morning, and I read this, but I don't, I don't, I'm just going to quickly summarize this, and the referendums, because you guys voted to put this on the ballot.
Yes.
So, maybe, but I just, I wanted to get out there for the people exactly what this is. But, referendums 2, 3, and 4, are you in favor of these?
Yes, it is, because a lot of those is one of the, some of the things that I discussed with city managers on this. Because I felt like this is something that we needed to do. The one thing, that I forget which number it is, that I really feel is necessary is the referendum...
Do you want to take a quick look there, tell me?
Not necessarily, but the referendum where people in the county could participate in our boards and commissions.
Oh, right.
I think that's a huge deal. We are missing out, I think, on a lot of potential expertise in our, in some of our boards and commissions because they can't participate. People are asking me, "Why can't I participate?".
I think we had some, like Fred Vujua was briefly on the tourism board.
Right.
And then I think they were like, "Oh, we can't do that."
I forget which one.
I forget exactly.
There is one commission that allows that right now, but it's only one commission as far as that goes. The rest of the boards and commissions, like I said, I think that we are missing out on a huge opportunity. We have a lot of people that have moved into this county in the past 20, 30 years, and a lot of them are saying, "I don't feel part of this community because I can't participate." So, I think this opens that up to where they can, if they want to be part of a boarding commission, they can. If they can say, you know, "I'll be part of the Parks and Recreation" or whatever. And, so it makes them feel like they're participating in our community. And I think that's a huge, I think that would be a huge win-win for Trinidad.
Okay. This is a little bit of plug for myself. Been filming since 2005. Do you think it's a benefit to the community to have a camera in there?
By all means. By all means, you know, there's, people always want transparency.
Right.
You provide that transparency by doing this, you know, by attending the meetings, filming all the meetings, putting it on your Trinidad Times TV. That's just another avenue where the people that, we, you know, all the people in Trinidad wanted to attend a meeting, we couldn't fit them in City Hall.
Right.
But they, prior to now, they would be able to watch it on Saturdays and Sundays and other times. Now, you have it on YouTube. So, they don't have to be in City Hall to see these meetings. So, they can watch what's going on and raise questions, or say, "Yes, they're doing a good job", or "I need to call, you know, the mayor", or "I need to call council so-and-so" and ask him, "Why, what was your, why did you have this opinion on this?". So, that's all part of being transparent. So, what you do, Tom, is what's been needed for a long, long time in this community. And I think any community who doesn't do it is doing a disservice to their constituents.
Well, I was on a panel a couple months ago, maybe three months ago, with Andrew Romanoff, and he's the one who got the first grants to film the state legislature. And they started in 2009, and he was telling me this story about it. And the people that are doing it were telling me the story that, you know, there are some states like North Carolina... Well, let me back up. Andrew Romanoff said, when they first started doing this, one of the senators said, "You mean you want people to be able to watch what we do here?". And now, it's commonplace and technology... And, and now it's commonplace, and technology is, I mean, my cameras and everything have changed so much, it's, it's really fascinating, but there are places like North Carolina where the legislature doesn't want cameras and everybody seeing what they do. So, we're here at this local level, ahead of the curve, and more and more communities are doing this. That's, that's a pat on my own back, I'm sorry.
Anytime somebody says that, you should be skeptical.
Yeah.
As to what really goes on.
True, true. This is it, la- last part here. This is where, this camera's on you, Phil, you can take thirty seconds, thirty minutes, whatever it is, but look at the camera as if you're, you're talking to the people in this community, and say whatever it is that you want to say to them about this election and you.
Okay. First of all, first of all, I really want to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity, and not only me, but all the other people that are running for the, during this election, to be able to come and voice their opinion, spending the amount of time that I've spent with you, and hopefully they are able to spend the same amount of time. But as far as the constituents of this community, I just wanted to say that, you know, I am running for mayor again, because I believe in my community, a lifelong resident, and if you look at my card, and I have a card with me here, and on the back of it, it says, actually, it's on the bottom, says, committed to my community yesterday, today, and tomorrow. That is a deep-felt feeling that I have, because I truly believe that statement. It's true yesterday, it's true today, and it'll be true tomorrow, regardless of if I'm not mayor or not. All of the people that are running during this, for this, during this election, I admire you for stepping up to the plate and saying, I want to be part of this community, and what, what I would like to see happen, you know, for, in our community and for our community. Some people may have issues that they want to handle, others may want to just get in to be part of what's been going on, because I believe that Trinidad is on a good path right now. We've had some good successes. One of the things that I will want to say for myself, and one of the reasons why I got into this, the race, two years ago, was I saw that there was a lack of communication of Trinidad and the state capital in Denver. I've been to Denver multiple times, I've visited with the governor a couple of times, I've visited with some of the other legislatures up at Denver, they've come down here, we, we have a lobbyist up in Denver, she has done an excellent job, because anytime I go to Denver, I call her, and she says, is there anybody you want to talk to? She's well-known at the state legislature and all the capital area, and she will set up meetings for me, sit down, have meetings with these people. So I, basically what I'm doing is, I want to create this presence that, yes, Trinidad is part of Colorado. So that is something that I really want to continue doing for the next two years. I want people to recognize that my heart is in this community, and I will do the best of the job that I possibly can. I'm out in this community constantly, listening to you, if you have, and I've had people come to me with complaints, and I've listened to you, and that's fine. If I cannot listen to you as mayor, I'm not doing my job. I need to be able to take those concerns and your questions. Hopefully, I can answer, answer your questions on the spot. However, if there are questions that I do not know, or the answers that I, that I can, or something that I cannot answer, I will tell you. I will get you an answer. There was a question that was asked of me last week, took me a couple of days, but I did get an answer back to the gentleman. So I do that constantly, and that's what's expected of me, and that should be something that all of the residents of this community should expect of anybody that is running for any office in Trinidad, is to be able to be open, to be able to say, I'm here to listen to you. As a resident, you have every right to ask me questions, because when you sign up for a job like this, you need to be able to take the good with the bad, with the ugly, no matter what. I hope that you have recognized that the job that I've done the last two years as mayor is a good job. I will continue to do the same job that I've done in the past two years. I have also, a couple of things that I am part of, that I just took responsibility for, is I am on the Southwest Amtrak Commission for this part of, for Trinidad and Los Angeles County. I am also on the Colorado Municipal League Policymaking Board, and there are some other things. I, I attend quite a few meetings, and these are things that are important to all of us, because if we, we need to have someone that can go to these meetings and, and speak with people, and make our point, to say, this is, these are our needs in Trinidad, and I think, I, I don't think I know that it is paid foods. We have, in the last couple of years, the amount of money that we've received from DOLA and the Space Create Program, CHAF tax credits, I can go on and on for the number of dollars that we just received this last year, and that's not for my doing so much, but because we have a good staff in City Hall. A lot of people have complaints about maybe sometimes what goes on in City Hall and staff members and stuff like this, but I will assure you that we have a very good staff in City Hall that work their tails off day in and day out, to do the job, and the best job we possibly can for this community. We have a new city manager on the ground, who I think is doing an excellent job. He's very even-tempered, and he's a likable person, and I think if we give him the opportunity, I think he will stick around for several years, which is something that we've not had in a long time. And that is one of the things that I would like to see personally, is to have a city manager here who was here for six, eight, ten years. The last thing I wanted to say, as a mayor, you need to have an even temper, and you need to be able to listen, and I feel like I'm that person to be able to listen, I'm even-tempered, as I have shown in the meetings, there's been issues sometimes that we've had an open discussion, where I have always maintained my composure, and I think that's a very, very important component that a mayor has to have.
Phil, thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank you for, again, for, you know, having these programs like this.
I, I enjoy it, and, and I know it's made a difference, but what excites me is how many people are running. I'm glad to see that.
It is.
You know, not everybody wins, but at least we live in a country where we get this opportunity, because there's a lot of countries that they don't even have this opportunity, and as much as it's going on at the national level right now, they're probably not gonna affect much change, but if you get out and vote in this election, you can make a difference in Trinidad.
Right.
And that, that's what this is about for me, is transparency and encouraging people to participate in our government.
You know, and there again, you know, people need to vote for who is going to do the job.
Right.
You're not supposed to vote for, you should not be voting just because he's my neighbor.
Right.
Or he's my friend, or he's my boyfriend's friend, you know, whatever, you need to vote for the people that you know are going to do the job, and who have Trinidad, you know, in their, in their, in their heart and their soul. That's who you need to vote for.
Great. Phil, again, thank you, we're gonna wrap it up.
Thank you.
You bet. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tom Murphy, this is Trinidad Now, thank you, this is very enjoyable, we interviewed Joe Bonato this morning, Mr. Rico today, there are more candidates coming, I'm not gonna release this, well, when you're watching this, I'll have released it, but the goal now is to not release this until everybody's interviewed, so people don't hear the questions ahead of time. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right.
All right, Tom, thank you.
That was excellent, Phil.